Thank you for attending. This is the early meeting, April 8th, 2019, Malibu City Council. And we are here for the early meeting. And the items were on the agenda pre-posted.
Public comment on the closed session items?
It appears we do have public comment. We have three public comments. No. No roll call. Would you like to do roll call, Heather?
Call the orders usually first.
Okay. I'll mark the time at 4:04.
Councilmember Mullen?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Farah?
Here.
Mayor Wagner?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. First speaker is Mary Lyndon.
What? Sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor Wagner and members of the council. I don't think I have to tell you, I'm not really comfortable speaking to you in this type of forum. But I was even less comfortable watching all of the negative correspondence that's been coming through to you regarding Riva's evaluation over the past, what seems like, two, three months, without speaking to you from a staff perspective. Because as you know, managing city staff is one of the most important things a city manager does. I'm one of nearly half of the city staff that signed a statement that was submitted to you today in full support of Riva. And it was meant to show that we have strong, unwavering support for her and the tremendous job that she's done and that she continues to do despite everything that's been going on for the last couple of months. I also want to point out that a couple of our coworkers were uncomfortable signing this document. They wanted to, they wanted to show their support, but they were afraid of retribution from certain members of the community. And I think that's a really sad, sad commentary about the state of the city at the moment. I'm not going to read everything that was in that memo, you all got it, but mostly we wanted you to know that we can say without hesitation that the city's successes over the past three years, and even before that, are in great part due to Riva's dedication to this community and to achieving the council's work plan. As you know, greatness trickles down, as does lack of greatness. But in this case, it is greatness that has trickled down, and her positive energy certainly has infused this staff, your staff, with confidence to move forward to successfully help this community rebuild. A lesser person at the top would have led to a much different place than we're in right now. We all owe her a great debt of gratitude and respect. And speaking personally, I've had the privilege and the honor to work for this city for over 16 years. And during that time, I've served three magnificent city managers. I know each of them very, very well. I stay in touch with Jim and Katie. And each time a new one came onboard, I had to adjust to a different management style. So they aren't the same people by far, but I can say without a doubt in my mind that neither Katie nor Jim would ever say that they could have done a better job than Riva has done, both before, during, and after the fire. And they would have been very proud to have done a job as well as she did. And over the past couple of months, I don't think I'd gone three days without somebody, whether it's a staff person or somebody that works with the city, that hasn't asked me, "How's Riva doing?" People care about her. You may not hear from them as much as you hear from the others, but people do care, people support her, and people are grateful for what she has done for this city. So I hope that you will find a way to bring this process to a conclusion and encourage the community to work towards decency and respect and a brighter, kinder Malibu once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mary's followed by Norm and John. Norm Haney and John Mazza.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to City Council. Thank you, Chair Wagner. I want to echo the comments that were just made with regard to Riva. I don't see all the things that she does. I know one thing. She's an absolute brilliant when it comes to raising funds and when it comes to moving the city's objectives forward. So I echo the comments that were just made. I've had the opportunity to work with her on a number of issues, and in every case, she brings in people that she trusts. And the conversation is between people that understand the nuts and bolts of the city, as well as her ability to properly analyze and make decisions on issues. On another subject, which I don't know that much about, which is the discussion that's referenced here about selling property to Los Angeles County Fire Department. I don't know where the... I'm assuming it's two acres, but I don't know that because there's no report on it. I don't know what the sales price would be. Unfortunately, I think probably it would be the appraised price, which is based upon the hard negotiations that the city council was involved in, and Riva was involved in, in getting an incredible price from the owners of the Ioki property. I would hate to think that we were selling property to the county of Los Angeles for the same price that we negotiated, you negotiated, for the people in the city of Malibu. I don't know where the... I don't know how much is being sold. I don't know where it's being located. I don't know what we're getting in return from the county. There are a lot of people that think we didn't get very much from the Fire Department in this last fire. And I haven't been convinced that the fire station that the Los Angeles County Fire Department's currently in is somehow not meeting their requirements. But I think Rick could probably respond to that better than I could because he has spent much of his life in the Fire Department. So I am certainly not qualified to make comments as to where they are now, whether it's sufficient to meet their needs, and whether or not we should be selling them two acres of property that you folks worked so hard to get for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Norm followed by John Mazza.
Good evening. I'm not going to comment on the first item. That's your job. I do think, though, that transparency is part of management. And in the case of selling off our recently purchased property, there has been no transparency. We have, again tonight, also, the swap coming up with no transparency, with incomplete EIRs, no geologies. But in this case, the public was promised that these three parcels would be reviewed by public, by the parks and rec and the citizens, and figure out where things should go and what should be put on them and what should be in central Malibu and what should be somewhere else. And it seems to me that by precluding a portion of that without any public comment, or as Norm says, not much knowledge, I've heard it's two acres, it could be five, who knows? But it's a complicated process since it's hindered by MTA requirements. Does the Fire Department have to meet those? Is it going to be rezoned I, so the Fire Department can rebuild under the same terms as they did Station 71, which is little over a quarter of an acre? Brand-new station, great station. I have no clue what somebody could do with two acres for a fire station. But I do think that there's no hurry here. The county operates at a snail's pace. If we operate at a snail's pace, they operate at a slow snail's pace. We have time to look at these properties, see where, what portion of that property we should sell, not just what they want, what portion we should sell, whether we want soccer fields there, which could be screwed up a little by how it's sold, how it's divided, which portion of that property, is it the commercially really valuable front portion on Civic Center Way, or is it up top? These are all determinants of value. And whenever we've really negotiated in the past, we've negotiated either Christie or city manager, but we've never gone the route of negotiating with a professional like we did on Legacy Park. We had the best real estate lawyer in Los Angeles against us. There's no reason why we can't hire the best real estate lawyer in Los Angeles, or something, some version of that. So I think you really ought to slow down. We have... So we waste six months looking at where facilities should go. It's not a huge deal to spend six months studying something, or a year, or determining where fields go. The Fire Department, I would doubt if they broke ground within five years. So think about that before you rush off and do something without the public knowing anything about it, which they really don't. They know nothing. This was our staff report. That's it. Thank you.
And thank you, John. That's our final speaker.
So at this time, Mr. Mayor, we'll reassess to a closed session pursuant to government code section 54957 and 54956.8 to discuss the two items that are listed on the posted agenda.
Thank you, Christie. We'll be back shortly. Bye-bye.